Yeah.
Oh, no.
I was worried.
She's all right.
I'm so scared.
Sure, the mom's still around?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's a little easier. It's the last one that really is.
Yeah.
Gosh dang it. Well, we'll go ahead and get started for our work meeting on June twentieth, twenty twenty four. I haven't heard from Ryan that he's not coming, so I would assume that he probably is going to come tonight. I would think. Um, and so, as we were just talking about, so here's the packet that Morgan did, which I think is really good. And she will always have that here for you. Um, you know, we try to always get the packet out.
Oh, this is great.
Yeah.
Looks just like the sewer meeting.
You know what? Yeah, just like the sewer. In fact, I brought that to her.
Who wants to copy the sewer?
I brought that sewer to Morgan and said, because I think I mentioned that, the first sewer meeting, I went to, I printed out all sixty-five pages. And then got there and they said, you don't have to print this out every time, and they had this, which was nice. So I still reviewed it ahead of time to make sure I had everything I needed to correct, but then, rather than me printing it out, which I've been doing with ours as well. So, okay, well, let's just go ahead then, um, discussion on agenda items. First one, I wanted to ask, anybody have any questions on Jessica Smith? The name I would like to tonight appoint.
Well, basically, the first I read the name or whatever was when the thing came out, you know. Um, I reached out, some people knew her, some people didn't, I could find somebody that did know her. Had good recommendations. But, um, been working with her in the PTA, that she was hardworking, dependable, um, stood her ground on some things, but that's all I know of her. I don't know her any other way at all.
Where does she live?
Um. Does she have an address on here?
I just wondered if she was in West Hooper, East Hooper, or?
She, her address is fifty-two oh five West Forty-eight Hundred South. So I, I felt impressed when I interviewed her. Um, and the reasons why, she said that she want to, she loves living in Hooper, would like to stay Hooper, stay rural. With that in mind, we need to grow to support our community. She put a member of the PTA, um, various roles, she's there. Said she's, she's not. It asked, one of the questions asked, if you've ever dealt with planning or development, and she said, I have not, but with that being said, I'm willing to study, ask questions, and feel comfortable about it. In her interview, she said her father had served as a planning commission member, oh, excuse me, I think a city council member, and so, but I thought tonight, and we'd have her come up and you can ask her questions. If anybody has any questions, like I said, I know who she is. Um, I don't know her really well either, so, but.
Is there a training regiment, what's their appointment sometime?
And she came in and put an application here.
She came into an application.
Is it, it's all a trial?
Sir, is the training, can I get a hold of you, Tolly, to tell me where to find my training? I've tried to Google stuff and I can't, because there was.
I've heard they provide it, but I don't.
Yeah, I think they do.
They do.
Yeah, they do have a training.
And I'll try to work on that, too. I put a call in to Cameron Dill, and then we've been missing each other all day to get all of that, um, done.
I just have one question before, so before that, there's public hearings on that, on the agenda.
Oh, 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 no.
What, what public hearings?
Oh, no, there isn't any public hearings, so.
There's nothing listed.
There's nothing listed.
It's just a place.
It's just a place.
That's where they would go if we had, so I guess.
Yes. So, yeah, it's just if there was something that there isn't. Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there is, there is training that is required. She would have to have one hour of training, as would anybody, before she could vote at the next meeting. And so if she is sworn in tonight, then we may, I will get her connected with that training. Um, the Obedsman Office said they are willing to come and do some training for both Planning Commission and City Council, which I think would be great. And also Cameron Dill said that, when he talked to me before, that they were getting one scheduled for both Planning Commission and City Council members to attend in our area. So I will find out when those are. I, I always think trainings are good, you know, I would never not want to attend the trainings. And so then we will go ahead and work on that, too, so. Okay, well, if not any other, um, questions on that, then we'll just have her come up. And, did anybody else have any questions on anything else on our agenda?
Not on the agenda. I just, I just have questions about follow-ups and different things.
Okay.
So, I don't know, do you all get the same email as I do from Mitt Neely? At all, like that, how he wants to live in his ADU, it has this, it has this.
Oh, yes.
It's almost finished, blah, blah, blah. I just, finally, I'm an email that just said, the ordinance says the owner of the property has to live either in the home or the ADU. Said as long as you're doing that, you're within the ordinance. But I don't know, I would suspect that the building has to be inspected and different things like that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I would, I mean, he's probably pretty much okay as long as he passes inspection and such, okay.
I would think so. I have been in it.
He keeps, like, asking and.
What's his name again?
Mitt Neely, yeah, he sends out an email.
Oh, the welder fellow down here by the trest.
Uh-huh, yeah. Yeah, so it's like, I mean, does he, does he keep asking because he's doing something wrong? Because we haven't given information, why does he keep asking, or is he just not sure, so? I can signal if he reached out to anybody else or not.
Yeah, I'm sure once it's past all of the inspections.
Okay.
I don't see any reason, there's nothing in our ordinance that says they can't, as long as one of them's living there.
That's, that's what basically says, as long as you're, you're the homeowner of the, living on the property, then, okay, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
When, when they took me on this little tour, at one time his grandson was going to live in it, but then he said he thought he would.
Yeah, I think he's going to be.
And then ran out his house, maybe.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then like, or his other part of his family can live there or something.
Yeah.
And then I had a question on the follow-up, where is, hmm. It'll come back to me in a minute, I hope. That's, I should have written it down, I thought I'd remember, that's kind of silly of me to do that, so. That was just my one question, if anybody else received that same email.
Yeah, I, now that you mention it, I, you, I, I think I responded to him once and told Linda that you could contact the office and get my information.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure I didn't feed him the wrong information or whatever, but that's how I remembered, I probably looked back into the ordinance, it was in my notes, but I didn't.
Okay. And about have any questions on the minutes or anything? I just received a message, so.
Minutes look, minutes look fine to me, I went through those and.
Yeah. Um, this is from Jenny Stanger, FYI, the minute stated, I got up and stated I was in favor of putting a hold on conditional use permits. However, I did not do that, my neighbor Carrie Brunel did. And the recording only captured the first few minutes of the actual meeting, it was all just the work meeting and then cut off during. So that would be one correction on that. And the only, when I was reading through one question I had, as I remember at the time, um, and it does say that, when I turned to you Debbie and said, you know, it was your decision on Jenny, based on this, and you said, no, you'd received other information that you had discussed. So it didn't say that, but, and, and we were trying, our tape recorder quit.
That was, um, just from Facebook, just Facebook postings she had posted in the, in the past that I had, that I had gone up.
Because I thought you said something about other information you'd received from Amanda? There was, like, on the drama request or the email, Morgan?
No, just that. No, just that, uh, just the one that we received as a city council, and there was some, uh, there was just the things.
Probably.
Things about the city that had been posted on Facebook that she had posted about the city. I just felt it was a lot of negativity and, and things, and maybe not a fit for the city.
Well, we didn't have the recording either, Morgan and I were going through and trying to do the best.
So that was, that was what it was.
So do we have, that's not posted yet, right, the recording?
We don't have it, the battery went dead. Which is unfortunate.
Oh.
And, I did call down to the Attorney General's Office to report it, because we were in violation of the Open Meetings Act, because we do not have a recording. And he said, if anybody called them, he would have called me and asked about it. So he said, well, at least you're ahead of the ballgame, because you already called ahead of time to report it.
So now we know.
And so now they know, and I told him, it's one of those things that happens.
I'm sure it happens.
And so.
I hate to count the number of times state councils and meetings have not recorded, because the batteries were dead. Just, so it's not a surprise.
Yeah. Okay, she said another neighbor also got up and talked, but he was not mentioned. Shouldn't each person who spoke be listed in the minutes? So.
Yes, well, however.
That's hard when, you know, yeah, when we don't know, should I just ask her, do you have a name?
Do you have a name?
Okay.
Lori, the Franko gal did, Kami did, um.
I think they're both listed.
The Urson guy did. Brent Hanson.
Well, you know what, it's something that happened, and I thought rather, to be proactive rather than reactive, you know? If you just call, let them know ahead of time, that if anybody did call and complain, then they already know, we were aware of it, this is, this is what happened, so.
Well, between all of you, you ought to be able to reconstruct on the minutes, pretty much, or whatever happened, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can, you can add my part in there, she may do.
I was thinking around, yeah.
There you go, Brian. What did you say?
I said, you can add my part in there.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't remember that you said in the Facebook, but.
Yeah, it was, I didn't say Facebook, it was just other comments that it made.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. We were social media.
Yeah. We're just talking about the minutes, because the recording shut off last meeting.
Hmm.
So we don't have it, so we're trying to make sure we have, what minute of the week we have on? Yeah. Yes. And I just previously asked them if they had any questions on Jessica Smith.
I don't even know who she is.
I don't think any of us will get this.
I don't, no, I don't think any of us, well, I don't know who she is either.
I did some texting and calling around and finding out.
I looked in the State Directory and.
Well, and I would hope we would not turn down somebody just because we don't know who they are, because realizing we have ninety-six hundred people that live in Hooper, and I would dare say we don't know all of them.
Not like the old days when there were two thousand.
Exactly, exactly. So, um, okay. So, we are going to be mailing out a public notice, so I made you a copy, because, um, we have to, we need to do this because of the rate increase. So if, I just made you a copy, if you would like to look through it, it's just a pretty basic, we try to just put down as much information and make it as simple as possible, but everybody, don't worry.
There you go.
Okay. That just simply states, um, and we talked about this in the office, the most economic way to be able to mail this to all residents. None of us wanted to fold these and envelope and stamp them and pay that cost. So River Print, who does our newsletters, said they will print these off, and they will just be folded, and they take them to the post office, and then we can use the Postmaster that, um, or I talked to Ryan, that, you know, permit that we have to go out.
Did you just reorient Ryan? No, no.
No. I was just looking at the wording. The rates being charged for the following. Waste Management Green Can, Waste Management Blue Can.
Should it be on the following?
The rates being charged for the following. It's missing something there.
Charged, we're at, um, we're at, the rates being charged as follows for the.
So we try to just do it, just, for the rates being charged for the following, and that's why they're listed bulleted, so people don't have any question which rates we are questioning. There for the green can, the recycling, and the sewer. And then down below, it lists all of what the rates increases are going up to, then just a real brief, they're not, because there's a lot. If people have questions, they can call, but our garbage prices went up from Waste Management. And I put, just put in there, the sewer district have an increase since June of twenty twelve, and the reasonings, I mean, we have that whole breakdown from Teresa. We had talked about, do we want to do that whole breakdown, and we thought, probably not, if people can just see basic information. Um, but this has to go out the beginning of next week, because rates will go up July first. We're in the process, the office staff, of changing everyone's bills, that will be, end up having an increase.
So, I, I do think it, Ryan's right, there's some wording that needs to be changed. I'm thinking it needs to say, during the last budget review of the utility accounts, comma, it was brought to the attention of the mayor and city council that the rates be charged for the following.
But we're not charging for the following, the rates being charged, this is the current.
Right. But it, it's not, it's not the correct wording.
Right.
It was brought to the attention of the mayor and city council that the rates are being charged for the following.
Attention of the mayor and city council that, uh, the rates need to be adjusted for the following.
Or.
The rates need to be adjusted for the following.
Yeah, adjusted or, or being. Yeah. There's like, the words are different.
And I, I think you probably need to take that language here and, and put that into the resolution, because it, it doesn't cover the additional weekly garbage can.
Yeah.
And they, and they maybe already printed them, so we'll see, if they've started printing them, this is what it is, okay, so.
So, so Morgan, we'd need to put in the resolution that, uh, additional weekly can increase, I don't think we have that in.
Additional weekly cans. Thank you for.
You might want to switch that out when you're about to leave town.
So if we can change that, the rates being charged. Being charged.
Going on vacation.
For the following need to be adjusted, okay.
Thanks, question.
Okay. Well, we'll see. Anyway, we thought that was the most economic way to mail them out. Um, if this isn't going to be positive, we know it's not going to be positive, but that's what I tried putting down below, residents cannot be charged more than the actual expense of the city. And cities cannot function in deficit if utility charges do not meet the current bills that the city has to pay, which they're right, I mean, I think she was pretty. Kami explained that really pretty well, with those restricted accounts, we really, I cannot go on the whole, nor can we charge more.
I think that, uh, third to last paragraph also means an extra word.
Okay.
The increase is necessary due to increased fees paid to Central Weaver Sewer District for restricted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know that residents cannot be charged more than the actual cost.
But it will not.
You can say will not.
Will not.
I think some cities actually make quite a lot of money on utilities.
They, they just put a little, little, uh, balloon there on top of it.
But I, I don't think they're, I don't think they are supposed to, though, from talking to Kami, in those accounts. She made it sound like legally, we are not supposed to. Maybe some cities do, but that, I don't know, and that's what she said, so.
They paid, charged another quarter just from friends, though.
So what word did you say then?
Maybe say, should not be charged.
Should not, or will not.
I think Clinton, because that lady from Clinton came in and they make, she said it's a pretty good profit center, because they control the garbage cans, so they do.
But that's because they own them, so they just bump it up all the time.
They own them.
Yeah.
So, but we don't want to own our garbage cans.
The other thing that, that is kind of a, a variable is, what is the actual cost in city personnel managing the garbage system? And there is some cost there, even though it's not what, what you're being charged by Waste Management or by the county for dumping.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that is somewhat of a variable, it seems to me.
Yeah, that's true, too.
And it shouldn't, and cities cannot function in a deficit of utility charges? Or if, I mean?
Well, and should not, too, because you've already done that the last couple of years.
Well, if, if utility charges.
Okay.
Do not meet the current bills.
Right, okay, perfect.
Yeah. Yeah. Luke's crew. And, like you say, people aren't going to be happy, but I think that there has been enough said that, to a lot of people, this won't be a complete shock, if they attended any of our work meetings.
I think there's a vast majority that have no clue.
No clue, but you know what, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking like, it's just, I mean, yes, it adds up, but I'm thinking, another dollar for you to make my garbage go. Another dollar for you to pick my recycling can. Okay.
Certainly easier to look at that every year, too, rather than having a sixteen dollar increase in sewer.
Yes.
You know, I think that's something we seriously need to look at. Um, I think, like Kami mentioned, we talked about, a lot of cities just have a straight three percent increase every year. It is something we need to look at, because central, um, the sewer district has gone up, and we have not increased. So I think, and I think garbage continues to go up, too, most of the time, so we really do, oh, okay, these are names, sorry, Carrie Brunel and Joel Timothy both spoke at the beginning.
You got two percent increase.
Yeah. Anyway, I think we need to look at that and see what we're doing, because, no, if, if it really did just go up, you know, three percent, that's not that much, but sixteen percent is going to seem like a huge increase.
But, you know, if people get angry, they can do their own research, and they can find out what we're having to pay out, and they'll find, if they do the math of what each resident is paying, they'll see for themselves, it does not equal.
Yeah.
Might be a good idea to have the treasurer do, do that right now, for last year, show what the cost was running the sewer, and what the fee should have been to cover that cost, so if somebody comes in, you just say, here it is.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, that's the call.
That's a great idea.
Well, I think Teresa, she already had that one, that she gave.
She probably has already done it.
Yeah, it was already done, because she went through, and, and actually, the biggest jump that we had was with maintenance fees, because the sewer only went up two dollars. And our twenty dollars is the payment that we are making, but the additional with that was the, the maintenance cost. And I think maybe Jared had mentioned that at one of the things, how the one piece used to be seventy-five dollars, and now it's four hundred and fifty dollars. And we.
That pump?
And we, well, they're not even a pump, it's, it's a little, yeah, it's a little tiny piece, yes, and they.
BFD valve.
We're trying to make sure that we have enough of that on hand, and.
Yes. Yeah.
Frequency device.
Because the problem is, if something goes out, we're in trouble, you know?
And they know, that company knows that, though.
But, but that's why I, I was questioning where we came up with that figure.
The sixteen dollars?
The fourteen dollars just for maintenance, like, yes, parts have gone up, but how did we get to that number?
That many residents paying that?
Yeah, that number of residents, with fourteen dollars a head, equals what, you know?
And then, of course, you'll have the people that are on Septic, they'll be like, ah, so.
So, so Teresa actually, and I don't know if you, if you had received a copy of this or not, but Teresa actually did this, that was sewer maintenance. And so she went through and, and went through, and all, every one of these are codes, they, there are GL codes that are in our budget, went through every one of these, and so there's utilities, equipment, fuel, administration, engineering, merchants, it goes on, like, there's a whole entire page of things she's listed. She gave the twenty twenty-two and the twenty twenty-three, and by the time she went through the difference in the costs, it ended up being per sewer connection was twenty-five dollars and sixty-three cents a person. And she rounded that up to twenty-six dollars, because she said, no one wants to deal in fifty-three cents. So there are on this list, probably twenty or thirty items, let's see, one, two, three, four. Twenty-five items that are itemized out that shows that. So, yeah, if anybody really has enough concern and wants to come in and ask, um, every bit of this is on here. The only thing that looked like didn't go up was sewer general, that, that was coded under six thousand, but also what they did was, they broke that down into some of the other categories. And I think one thing you will see with Kami, is I think you will see even more categories. She felt like some of these categories needed to be broken down, and she mentioned that in our meeting. And also that she felt, felt like sewer should be its own category, not just lumped in with all the other utilities. And also that the, um, Central Weber Sewer District should have its own category, not just lumped in everything, too.
Oh, yeah.
So.
So question on the resolution on the back page, twenty twenty-four oh six, do we need to have the increase for the additional can on that as well?
Oh, oh, yeah, that, we, we just barely talked about that, I think, you had it right before you came in.
Sorry. Sorry, I'm late.
No, that you're okay, you're okay.
But yes, that should be on.
How dare you?
Yeah. And, you know, when I looked at the, um, recycling can, there wasn't a, you know how, like, on the garbage can, your second can is less expensive than your, your first can is? But on the recycling can, there was no difference. Like, one recycling can is the same price as your second recycling can, so if it's going up two fifty, they both need to go up two fifty. I don't see any difference in that. So, yeah. Okay, is any other questions on that, on this sewer and what we need to do? Okay, so, um, Brian, I was going to bring up, maybe you will as well, but we did receive that letter from the senior saying it is going away in July.
Well, this July?
Yeah.
I thought we had another year.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think what I read, um, starting this July, we can go pick them up if we want to, but we will no longer, I just barely received, did you just get, get a new letter on that?
I did, too, I want to know.
Um, but he has, he has a really different name than, let's see. Let me go through and, because when I first saw it, I thought, it's like a shod or something, um, when, oh, yes, no, that's not it. Oh, you, um, no boo. He sent it out on Tuesday. And it, this is reminding you that Hooper City, below, so he's highlighting, so, it says, um, we are conducting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, producing meals, yes. They will continue if the city coordinates picking up returning trays leftovers with Weber Human Services Nutrition. And then it says delivering meals and picking up trays, no, beginning July twenty twenty-four, but, um, the WHS, which stands for Weber Human Services, will coordinate it if the city staff comes to them to pick them up, and then providing an employee to manage the site, no. So, starting here, July, we have none of those. And so then it's asking, the, and it gave us some options, and would we consider, so we can have city staff that will go pick up on Thursdays sometime and bring the food out here?
How are we responsible for keeping a meal, or meals?
What do you mean?
Non-perishable meals.
The liability of feeding someone that they might get sick from, I mean.
It should be a Weber County vehicle.
In, in a hot car.
Should be a Weber County vehicle.
So, so I, I think I've mentioned this before, that what West Haven City does, because there's only a few cities that are even participate. Riverdale has their own chef, but Riverdale City has money, and wouldn't that be wonderful to have a chef that would come and do that? We don't. Um, West Haven, they purchase all of their meals from Kents, so they have people pre-register ahead of time how many are going to be there, and they pay kind of the similar that we do here. And then I think they, maybe the city subsidizes like maybe a dollar or two, and they go to, on Kents, they do theirs on Wednesdays, but they go to Kents and it's like a chicken pot pie or a, um, chicken fried steak or something, and then they just bring them down. Um, because Kents is a store, we don't have to worry about anything as far as like any of us having our food handlers permit, as far as having like, um, temporary food, any of that, because they are a business. That is an option. We maybe sometimes could get another business that might be willing to donate it, like, maybe we could contact local businesses and ask them if, like, Costa Vida, or I don't know who, or West Side Pizza, I don't, I don't know, just trying to think of some.
How much do we pay into, do we pay into Weber County to provide these meals that are coming now?
We do not.
So we would have to come up with a budget that.
Well, we pay, we pay our county taxes.
But, well. Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that budget comes from.
But, but our patrons are paying for their own meals now anyway.
Okay.
Because I just barely talked to Christie last time, to ask her if she had received anything, but this just looks like it came through on Tuesday, um.
So we gotta respond to that and say, well, if all we're gonna get is the meal provided, and we have to pick it up, why don't you give us the money for a whole year, in July to twenty-five? And we'll take that money and go get our own meals.
And just make our own, get our own.
From, yeah, that could, carry on, give it to us.
That's true, yeah.
And subsidize us.
Except for they, but they weren't subsidizing us anyway, because our patrons have been paying for their own food.
Well, but I bet it's, they're, they're paying a certain percentage of it.
I, we, they weren't, when I talked to Christie.
Now, how, how much do we pay? Like, three or five dollars?
They just pay four dollars.
Four dollars.
Four dollars.
Christie said we were, we were self-sustaining. She said we were one of the facilities that they did not subsidize us for our, our residents paid for the amount the meals cost.
So the resident still has to pay the four dollars?
They still have to pay, but, yes. They, they, it's still the same, if it's like four dollars.
How much does Kents charge?
Um, I think Kents were like five dollars to be a meal.
I was gonna say, if they haven't paid the four dollars, it'll subsidize a dollar.
Yeah, that's what I think too.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, I can tell you right now, I, I am not going to give one of our city staff this job to have to go to Weber Human Services and pick up that food and bring it out.
Right.
They don't have time to do that.
But you got, certainly they got dry, about time to get it out.
Yes, they do.
Kents is so close, and then you don't have to worry about temperature changes because it's such a close drive.
Yeah. I think so too. Okay, so what they're really trying to get us to do, which again, with their whole thinking is, so they're trying to come up with funding to provide rides. So, so they have four centers right now, they have one in Roy, one in Washington Terrace, one in Riverdale, and one in Pleasant View. That, and Pleasant View and, um, North Ogden share, Washington Terrace and South Ogden share. And again, Riverdale gets no, as far as money from it. They're going to go down to three, but they're trying to come up with some money to provide buses, so people could, like a van. So people could come here and catch a van and go to Riverdale. And I think I mentioned at one meeting, they told me how many people from Hooper actually do go to Riverdale, do go to Washington Terrace. We do have Hooper residents that are attending other places. And one of the problems with the meeting was they want us to pay all those thousands of dollars.
Right.
Which both Ryan and I said, no, we aren't. Not only are you doing away with our meals that aren't all that great to begin with, and it was like eleven, what was it?
It was a lot. We were just flabbergasted, we were just like, you want us to pay what for what?
Yeah.
How about no?
We're not, we are not. Um, and anyway, we could always maybe combine with.
Every city agrees with us, every single city, small cities, we're like, there's no way.
Uh-huh, we, we are not going to do this.
I think they'd probably be happier with the meals from Kents anyway.
I think so too.
Are they similar, are they?
Yeah, I, I think the Kents meals are good. I, I've only ever helped with one of West Haven's and I went and did a game, and I can't remember what the meal was, but it was just one of those clam shell things. And I think it was like ham fried steak and had mashed potatoes and gravy and a vegetable and a dessert.
Probably their daily special they do.
Yes, um, so too, whatever their daily special is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay.
And we could try to combine, we could ask West Haven, they're, they're never going to get a center either. I suspect what they will do is probably keep maybe the one in Roy, and maybe Roy and Riverdale will have to combine. Keep the one in Washington Terrace and them, and you know, South Ogden will continue, and then the north. We could ask West Haven, but I think our pa- patrons that come here would probably sooner come here and get their Kents meal.
Do they, do we know why they go to the other cities for their, different day of the week possibly?
So.
So, sure.
Yeah, and they have things every day, like those other centers.
So they go, I'm gonna go with this, my lunch.
They do, they, they have.
I'll do it on this day, Riverdale on that day.
And, and a lot of them, like, the ones like especially Roy, Washington Terrace, and Pleasant View are really kind of in a panic. Because they have full-time staff that Weber Human Services has been paying for, and they have activities for the seniors every day and meals every day. So that's probably why we have ones that are going there, because we just do.
Just the ones.
Or, our other option is, we just do away with it.
I'd better keep it for them.
I think, yeah, I think that's a disservice to the older generation in town, I think we need to do what we can.
But Kents has already given us a discount, if they're gonna charge us five bucks.
Yeah.
Is there like seven?
There are seven ninety-nine or something, yeah.
Yeah, eight, eight dollars.
And we could ask what they'd be willing to do for us. I mean, this certainly isn't on the agenda, so we couldn't approve this tonight, but we could, but we have, yeah.
But we have to come July.
But there, but come July, it ends, and our next meeting will be till July.
And I'll bring pizza in that one week and we don't have a thing, I'll bring up some pizza.
And we maybe could, you know, sometimes there are businesses that are willing to bring in meals, um, for people and do a little activity. I know West Haven, that's where I was there, because I was doing an activity for them, and they do a little activity for them.
Do they do anything like that here, or is it just the meal?
Sometimes we have bingo that comes, how often?
Probably once a month, twice a month, okay.
They used to have someone that came in and trimmed toenails, they don't do that anymore, which really, probably they shouldn't be anyway, because there's some legalities with that. Who is doing it?
That's a help.
Yeah, yeah, well, there's doctors too that do that, that are licensed, but anyway.
Yeah.
So how, but, but, I mean, we would need to then amend our, um, budget for next year. And I guess be, in the meantime, maybe between our next meeting, then you'll just find out from the deli, realizing that, that we won't, so they won't have one on July the fourth, which would be their first one. They will have one on July eleventh, so maybe, maybe I can see if I could get someone to donate the meal for them on July eleventh.
How many people usually come?
I'd say probably about most ten.
Yeah.
Let me, I'll talk to the, um, the chef, the owner of, of warehouse twenty-two.
Okay.
He used to live in Hooper for a while, but he's moved since, but, um, because they do catering and those kind of things all the time, and I'll, I'll ask him. Or we could even ask, find out from the Davis School District Kitchen there in the Food Port Center, what they would charge for meals as well, you know, and.
But would we have to go get them off in that Davis Food Port?
I, sometimes you do, when you do it for catering.
Yeah.
But, um, I feel like, I, I can.
I mean, Kents would make some profit running.
Taking out to see if they'd ever wanna do something.
Yeah. Okay, well, so you'll work on then Lisa trying to find us a meal for the eleven?
Mm-hmm.
So we will put this on our agenda on the eighteenth then, for us to vote on this as a city council. So I think we need to be prepared then, and by then you can find us some prices, um, of how much then, and then we will have to modify or do an amendment to our budget, so we can include something in for senior meals, um.
But do they have a, any restrictions, any of them, or do they just kind of bypass what they know they can't eat?
I have no idea.
I, I'd never really.
I'm sure I can call Christie and ask her if she's on this for.
That'd be good.
So that might be a lot of fact, but. Here are some cookies, some pie.
You know what, I was saying, no, they maybe, they maybe just don't eat it.
Oh, we are thick, okay, well, can't do that.
Because I think they almost always have dessert, if someone has a birthday, I've seen them bringing cake quite often. Um, and they do bingo, there's all sorts of miscellaneous, not healthy foods, yeah.
Well, it's not, it's not a bad idea to reach out to some of our, you know, there's a lot of home businesses and all different other businesses, we could reach out to them and just say, hey, is there, is there a, a day in any of the months on a cer- on a Thursday that your company would supply?
Ten meals.
The prizes for the entertainment, or ten meals, or whatever it is.
Yes. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Can we talk about the, uh, soccer scheduling?
Yes.
On Sunday?
Yes.
So it seems like whatever club this is that comes on Sunday, I don't think there's a single Hooper City resident in the whole group. I don't know who they are or where they came from.
So are they paying to use our fields?
Probably not.
Unless, I don't, they're not, they're not paying us a dime.
They're not? Yeah, that's a problem.
That's a problem, right? And, and they're, they're proud of it.
So they're not scheduled.
On Sunday.
Use it, no.
I, I have on Saturday.
But, so who allowed them to come here on Sunday?
They probably just figured, hey, this is.
Nobody's here.
Yeah, nobody's there.
Nobody's telling us, no.
So, they, they didn't ask or talk to anybody, they just showed up.
I don't know, some people are gutsy like that.
We talked to us.
Food trailers, I mean, it's a big deal.
They, yeah, they have, they have a car to.
Oh, yeah.
They've got really good tacos.
Taco truck.
They've got good Sunday afternoon meal if you want.
You know, we had one group call and asked, but he, when I told him the press that, but he was like, oh, okay, kind of backed away, so.
That's probably how it is.
Never heard from them, so probably, that's why it's Teresa.
Do you normally charge people that use the field?
I don't know who's on the field.
I, I think we do it, they schedule it.
We used to have to use it.
So I think it's, it's been that people have come and can use it, because we have a variety of people all the time, but if someone wants to guarantee they can use that.
I think it's a hundred dollar deposit and then twenty-five a day or for so many hours.
Do you have games there or just practices?
Well, these Sundays have been like a tournament, don't you think?
Games? Oh, yes.
And restrooms are open, right?
Yes.
Well, there's some liability issues, so you ought to at least get enough to cover your liability issues.
Yep.
It is a big deal.
When A Y S O used to schedule it, they paid, because they, and then there, we had, um, Utah U Soccer, they scheduled it a little bit. Lacrosse, did they pay when they scheduled it? And I don't know how much, I don't know.
Looks like they're out there for a long, and probably, I'm guessing.
I suspect.
They turn on the sprinklers.
They wouldn't care.
Any ones out there now?
They, no, they come on Sundays.
Oh, Sundays?
On Sundays, and they're here.
It's a big crowd.
It is a big crowd.
With taco truck.
Interesting.
I'm sure.
But maybe we need to make.
Contact somebody.
Yes, but maybe we have to, somewhere within our regulations need to say, because, because if we don't have any. So we need to have something that we can go to them and say, if you are using this, you need to pay, maybe we need to have signs up.
Can you have this reserved?
Yes, in our parks, it's safe for use of these, um, park grounds, you need to contact a reserve or something. Because currently we don't have anything that says they can't use it. Somehow we need to have something to say that.
They, and they'll just walk past it too, because they'll say it's a free park, although I just like, no smoking signs never work and that, you know, all the other stuff.
Yeah.
Until you actually face-to-face with them, it's like, hey, this is not what we can do here.
So if you want to schedule, you have to pay a fee, but if you just come to practice or whatever, you don't pay a fee.
Yeah, but what?
So they probably figure nobody else is gonna be there on Sunday, so they don't need to schedule any stuff.
There should be something that says an organized game tournament, or whatever you want to call it.
An organized tournament. Especially if they're selling.
Yes, they are.
Schedule and pay for it.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe that's what we need to do, is have something in our fee schedule that says that, if it is an organized, just like you said, an organized game or.
Yeah, it's basically like if I was reserving it for a family reunion that day, I'd have to still pay.
Yes.
So.
And that's when the issues that come out came up, right? Because a family had the Pavilion reserved.
They did.
And then came and they, with no place to park and.
Yep.
They have a food truck here? Mm-hmm.
It looks like one of those street taco, is that what it is?
Oh, yeah.
The street taco?
I tried like, yes.
Street tacos are pretty good.
Well, you know what, I thought that.
Oh, really?
A buck fifty?
Yeah, that's good street taco.
That's a, that's a better price than downtown on.
Well, I want fifty cents per taco sold.
It just feels like it's become a free-for-all, you know, I hate to, hate to have the word get out, hey, go to Hooper area.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
It's free-for-all, you can play whatever you want, you know, it's like, oh, wait a minute, this would be some structure to this.
No.
Yeah.
Do you have a, a park subcommittee that can maybe look at all of that and come up with some recommendations?
We can get one.
Yeah, well.
Just like a complication, you know, or whatever that is.
You have like a broader field, if they want to use the other parks, it ought to be somewhat consistent.
We probably oughta, we probably oughta get a little, since it's becoming more of an issue.
And we've looked at it, we've talked about every year we should review our fee schedule. And maybe that is something we need to even have on, I don't know what else we have in July, so we'll see, but I think sooner than later. Because a lot of our fee schedule, even what we were charging, doesn't really cover anyway. Yeah, I mean, the same down at the rodeo grounds, what we charge doesn't even pay for our crew to go down and work the grounds. And we go in the hole, and then people complain, and it's kind of like the sewer, you know, we can't like triple the amount, but if we every year.
But it just kept up every year.
Every year, but I think we really need to.
Let's, let's make, let's.
Okay.
Get a date and we can do that.
Yes, yeah.
You do have a committee.
Huh? We've gotta get one, yeah, we've gotta get one, because, I mean, it's just been someone over parks and we really haven't had much issue or anything, so.
Debbie's gonna give.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, public work.
Well, you're probably gonna have challenges with that pickleball court at some point.
Yeah.
Every place else in this county has have pickleball courts that you can't get on, so maybe there needs to be something looked at there.
Yeah, we, we need to get, the more we grow, the more we need things.
Which I forgot, it's totally, not even signed, that the lights are supposed to be off, and I remember it was ten, thirty or ten o'clock, but they are not.
Oh, really?
I don't sleep, and at two o'clock, the lights are on and people are over there playing pickleball. So.
Two in the morning?
They don't even figure out, I'm gonna turn it off.
They can't.
Is it a sensor?
Contacted.
It's cash, cash electric.
Yeah, and they, they can't figure it out either, so they're having a matter of action.
Call West Haven, they've got one.
Yeah.
They're shut off promptly at ten o'clock.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I've got a little thing I can plug into the socket at my home that turns the lamp off, why can't you do that with these?
Might be a different.
Yeah.
There's gotta be a switch.
All it is is a hidden timer, that you can't get to or you can't access, you know, without going into a.
Without going through a lock box of some kind.
Yeah, exactly. It's, any electrician should know how to do it.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but they are, I mean, not every day, but that one time when I looked out at two and they were out there playing. That's crazy.
Well, if they hear, they can play all night, they'll be playing all night.
They, yeah, they were.
I was gonna say, I mean, we don't have to hire him, but I can have Wade come over and look and see if he can find it.
Okay.
If he doesn't, you don't have to hire him, just help us come look.
Okay, yeah, because that would be good, I mean, like I said, I forgot to tell Steve. So, okay, well, then let's, maybe, um, we'll see, if we don't have too much on our July eighteenth meeting, because we're not meeting on the fourth, we may, but if not, if not the eighteenth meeting, then Debbie, let's try to then, the first one in August, go over our fee schedule.
All right.
And we could get that sent out to you even a few weeks in advance that we could be looking at, because we, we really do, and that's something I think every year we should review.
So Kami, the treasurer, also wanted to review after the budget was done, so I know that's on our agenda as well.
Yeah.
So do one of us want to come over and talk to the soccer people on Sunday?
Well, just have the sheriff do that.
Let's go to the sheriff, you can just have the sheriff.
It's a good job for them.
The sheriff could.
But again, can we do that if we don't have something saying they can't be here, how?
Well, what does it say currently? Does, does it just say if you want an organized event, you have to pay for it?
Well, the person that you said reserved the park, they were bumped, so there's gotta be some rules.
Yeah, there's somebody that was doing their reservation.
So you have to reserve.
I, 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 I think there's something that says that in order to have it, you have to have a reservation.
Is that something?
Because I remember like the Bowery and everything, you know, so I would assume that that goes for the park too.
And, and I think it's just our fee schedule though, I just, I think we just have our fee schedule that says how much it is to rent it, because, like I say, when A Y S O and Utah U Soccer came, they actually filled out a form, the same like them, that they do down renting the rodeo, and we had them sign it. Other kids just coming to play though, we've never had them, so I don't, so Reed, I guess I'm asking you, can we go kick them off if we don't have anything?
Well, it's hard to do it if you don't have a rule of some kind.
Yeah.
I, I think getting some signs, you know, there's.
Well.
Particularly if it turns out to be a group of Latinos or something, you know, they'll say, oh, discrimination.
Mostly for any.
It's a big group.
This is the thing though with the food truck, is they're supposed to have a permit with wherever they're parked, they have to have, um, permission from the properties to be parked there.
I think that's pretty, pretty normal.
And through Weber Human, um, what, through the environmental health, you know, how you have to have those permits? Like we do, all of our food trucks that come to Hooper Tomato Days.
They have to have a permit.
They have to, yeah.
Well, even the ones that they do up there by the Maverick and all of that, they, you know, they've had, somebody's organizing it, but they, each truck, they have to have that permission to be in that parking lot, and it shouldn't be anything different here.
So the first step is to come up with some regulations that make sense, and keep in mind that a lot of the folks in your own community don't want to use it, so you don't want to make it onerous.
No.
Right, yeah. No, I, I don't think having a reservation for something is asking too much. You know, you wanna, you wanna play a sport, just have it reserved.
What if they even had something that maybe could be a catch-all? Most people that come for a practice are probably only here for one or two hours max.
Right.
So what if somewhere in our ordinance it could say if this is going to be used for longer than two hours, it must be reserved? Because they're here for longer than two hours, so that, that might kind of give us something that those that just come and practice, they come and practice, but this.
Well, we could put, it's fine out here, like the Bowery down there has that little, um, case that the calendar's in, it says who's reserved it, or it's reserved this day, reserved this day. So if you show up there and think you're gonna use it, and you argue with somebody, you can go right over that calendar, it's like, oh, you did reserve it, I'm sorry, we'll move, kind of thing. So there, there could be something out there as well, to know how people like this, no, East Field, West Field is reserved, or you have not reserved it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So a couple of things, maybe we ought to cover before you get into the main meeting.
Okay. Okay.
The, uh, the fifty-one hundred south interlocal agreement, we finally got all the information from West Haven, so we're putting that together, should be ready another week or something. I think you attended a meeting this week, and you did, maybe you oughta talk about that, where we're headed on all that.
Oh.
Probably with the.
With the.
Drug center.
Oh, yes, oh, go ahead.
You can go ahead, I'll let you.
Well, so the lawyers, the lawyer from the drug and alcohol treatment center wanted to have a meeting with our lawyer, um, and ask about where we were headed with that. And so, um, they were there, we invited Bryce, that's his area as far as city council, and we had Sheldon, one person who's not trying to violate the open meetings act. And basically, I felt like, and was, I actually said this to them, um, I felt like we were being bullied because it was a matter of we would sooner do houses, but because you wouldn't let us do houses, we're going to bring in a drug and alcohol, and I actually did say that to him, I thought, and Bryce stuck up for me, because when they, he got pretty defensive that I would dare call him a bully, but I felt that way. Um, so, right now, we're kind of in a hole as far as the drug and alcohol is, because now they want to look at some other options. But things we talked about, well, then you bring us something that Hooper would want, that last, and I didn't, I wasn't involved in the first part, but the last one we saw that looked like buried type roads, it was quarter acre, was not appealing to Hooper at all, and so I think they're gonna go back and maybe.
This was the.
Yeah.
This, this is the developer.
The developer.
Oh, yeah.
So are there two, are there two developers of heritage lands that bought the one square on the north? Are they part of this, or?
So she was there, that they have bought that thirty acres, but you know how, how they bought a weird.
The Stokes, she, was that Stokes that was there?
I, I don't know what her name is, blonde, new Jared, 'cause she, I don't know what her name is.
I can't remember.
It wasn't Marsha.
I'd never seen her before, so.
Yeah, but, but they don't really have the access to do their, they did this weird shapes, they really don't have the fifty-one hundred access to really make that work. So I think that's why then now they're working with Matt Lo, who is the developer who does not own the land, but is, is, has some, well, it's not, I, I, it's under contract, but they keep extending it. It expired in April, they extended it till May, now it's extended to August with Torgay lease.
But they're the ones that won of the weird shaped zoning on it, remember when?
When you, for an ag type zoning, like it was divided up for.
Yes, and we all looked at each other like, what in the world are you gonna do with this?
Right.
Yeah.
And now bites him in the, in the back.
Yeah.
So rather than.
Cause they came with one plan and they brought another plan, and they sold this to this family member.
And it all started out as doing it for a will.
I would just probably leave it at that, since this is.
Yeah.
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 So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, so we'll just, we'll keep you posted, I'm sure the next we will see is, is something probably submitted to planning commission.
Okay.
Okay.
And we talked a little bit about the, the roundiness of the meeting last time.
Oh, yes.
I think, uh, that there needs to be some control there. I think when there's cheering and shouting and people speaking out of turn, it really becomes a mob and not a meeting. And I think it intimidates people from saying what they really feel too, so that's why we have the officer there, and if those things happen, I think we need to use him.
And I did speak to him about that on Monday, and at the beginning of this meeting, I will say that, and also they can come up, we always say about the three minutes, and they can come up and speak once. And it is not really a place to show clapping or saying things out loud, and they're welcome to come up if they want to for their, and I, and he said, if ever at any time, then we want him to, um, say.
Do it in a single?
Yes, yes, and we will do that, and.
You can't hold people in contempt in court, but that's what I'm used to, somebody does that in courtroom, they go to jail.
No, no. Right.
Well, planning commission wasn't any better either, so we'll try to have that also set at the beginning of planning commission, there were even tapes that were played and interesting music that was going on and.
Very disordered.
Yeah, it was.
Just this last one?
Yeah, and it went till about eleven o'clock at night.
Oh, my word.
Yeah, yeah, there was like, at one point, I said, what is that? It was like some alien music or something, they were playing some out of space or something, so that was, it was interesting.
And the deputy was there?
He was.
But he didn't say anything?
He did not, and we had one man that came up and just stood up here kinda by Morgan, that we didn't really know what that was either, but I did talk to him and said, we're not going to allow that anymore.
Well, I was gonna say, he might be new to this whole kinda thing, Lieutenant Jeffrey's probably gonna jump on that, but this one might be new to it.
Yeah, he's a little bit new, so you probably need to kinda give him a chance, weak addy ones.
He is.
Yeah, and I told him I would say that if we felt like that it needs to be that we want, and I'll, again, at the beginning of the meeting, I'll, I'll bring it up.
Just going. By the way, I did run into Jeffrey the other day, he said he really feels like he'd rather be here.
Oh, yeah?
I think it's more a desk job now, kinda.
It is a total desk job.
It is, it is, desk kinda thing, he doesn't love it.
Okay, well, let's move up into our regular.
Oh, that wasn't it?
Okay, my doctor told me, I had that hip operation.
You'll be able to run that to your pod?
Yeah, you can.
It is seven o'clock, we would like to call our city council meeting to order, it is June twentieth, twenty twenty-four. We are going to go ahead with our opening ceremony, the pledge allegiance will be given by council member Wilcox and the reference by council member Pito.
Please repeat our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to gather together, citizens of Hooper City, and we're grateful for, uh, the freedoms we enjoy and for the opportunities that, uh, afford us, we're thankful for the wonderful country we live in and the constitution that protects us and governs us, we're thankful for, um, Hooper City and the good residents that live here, and ask a blessing upon all of us that we may be protected and watched over and, and I care. We ask for a civil meeting this evening that we can discuss the items at hand and come to, um, consensus on the things that need to be discussed. We're grateful for all our great blessings, we pray a blessing upon this meeting and do so in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, so upcoming events, I just wanted to remind everyone that we will not have a meeting on Thursday, July the fourth, so our next city council meeting will actually be held on July the eighteenth. A couple of things coming up in addition, you know, we have our Hooper Tomato Days, but our junior queen contest is then on July twenty-seventh, and we will be giving you more information about that. And then our queen contest is on August seventh, and again, more information will be coming as far as those two things. So, um, we have public comments, but before we get to our public comments, as we say this every time, if you have a public comment to make, come up to the microphone, state your name, um, your address, you have three minutes, and then you have one time to do public comments. And sometimes in the past, we've had people then that get back in line, not necessarily this meeting, but sometimes in the planning commission meetings, but you have one chance to do your three-minute public comments. Uh, we also appreciate, we want to have a ruling meeting, and so we do not want people that's clapping or yelling out things. Um, I've already talked to Lieutenant Leavely about that this week, and so we're going to make sure things stay ruling, that if ever at any time we feel like something, something needs to be said, I will say a first to stop you. And if not, that that just occurred, then I will motion to him, and he will, um, take the matters next what needs to happen, so just so we are aware of that. So with that, we will go into our public comment section, and again, if you have, um, come up, and again, and we appreciate Morgan, and there are three minutes, and I know not again in this meeting, but we have another meeting where they said we are not stopping, and yes, when your three minutes are up, I will, if you don't stop, I will ask you to please stop, because your three minutes are up. And so if you have something you would like to say, then you can come up and state your name, address.
Rosemary England, fifty-three, thirty-eight west, forty-three, twenty-five south. So the last meeting, um, the minutes are not accurately reflected from what I can see, 'cause I read them, and there's no recording. So I want the statement into the record that, um, when the mayor asked the council if they were voting against Jamie based on the Amanda Prince email prior to the meeting, Marigoni stated, no, we've discussed it before, and she had other paperwork that needs to be into the meetings. And then going to the commanding attorney, if council and the planning commission are meeting outside these public meetings to discuss their vote for items on the agenda and how things are to go, that appears to need to be wronged, and there's something should be done about that.
Okay, thank you, and we will talk about, um, the minutes, and, and we had our tape recorder that shut off during our last meeting, unfortunately. And so we've had a few other additions we've had to do with the minutes, and so we welcome those suggestions and we will review those. And Morgan's done the very best she can, I reviewed them, we're trying to make those minutes as complete as possible, because we do need to have a complete set of minutes in order that we are not violating the opening act, and so if anyone else has any additions that you feel like you heard or maybe weren't, we certainly will welcome those, and we will review those as far as putting them up. So, thank you, any other public comments?
I, I have one, so, we, we just got, we're, we're on this action item D for the board adjustments, so we got the, the packet yesterday at four, and I didn't have time to review it, and I, I got, didn't get off work till like five-thirty, so we have two members of our planning commission here, I would like to ask them if they have the opportunity to review and put your okay on it, that it's what you wanted.
Do you want us to come up now, or do you want us to come up later?
Well, it, it looks like we're in a, it looks like we're in a vote on it before, so I'm giving you the opportunity now to just make sure, 'cause I, I did not have time to re, review the whole thing, so I just, like, you guys.
I thought they ran this one a week.
No, we got, we got it yesterday.
So, so we've reviewed this one several times, I think the last time it went, we reviewed it, and then it went back, I think for a few modifications to it. So, and this isn't new, this is one that we have reviewed for several months, but, yeah.
But it looks like this is the final, so I just wanna make sure.
Yes, there are some corrections.
One, one we just added, the one that went out, uh, about a week ago, right after the last meeting actually, uh, was essentially the same one we have today with a couple of changes that I'm gonna talk about, that I'm suggesting, and then you may have changes.
Well, maybe.
So do you want me to, I did.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have, it doesn't look like you're gonna have an opportunity for a motion on it, I don't think.
The only questions that I had, I know that, um, we had talked about when we went over the planning commission, that, um, I believe that Reed had said, and also the lead, when we had talked to them, that we wouldn't wanna have the city attorney service the appeal authority, and the way that it's worded right now, it sounds like the hearing officer is doing both the variances and the appeals. So I wasn't sure if that was something that, like, if you're still fine with having a city attorney do that, if we would want it set up where they're doing both the variances and the appeals. Then the other thing in our meeting that we had talked about, where there are being two different kinds of, um, review processes, the de novo one in the records when the planning commission had talked about, um, if you're familiar with that, the, the records review is, let's say the city council denies something, and then it's appealed to the appeal authority. The appeal authority would have the same information that the council looked at in making that decision, and that's what they would use to base their decision off of. With the de novo, additional information can be introduced, and Brandon and the commission all had said, we didn't think that was a very fair thing, because for you guys to make a decision and then have the appeal authority have additional information come in that you weren't privy to, that didn't seem very fair. But the way that this ordinance is worded, it said that, you know, they would be provided the information that was used in determining the denial or approval, whatever, but also additional information could be provided, so that kinda indicated that it was the de novo one, and I didn't know if that's what you guys wanted to go with, so those were the two things that looked different from the way that we had recommended it, so.
And I know Reed and I had already talked about this, and we will discuss this as far as it varies with the appeal authority, yeah.
That's why she is, I could talk about.
Yeah.
The de novo stuff, the, uh, the idea behind a hearing officer is they, they don't make judgments on, um, on facts. Uh, facts are as presented to the council, what they do look at is whether those facts justify some different decision based on what the law is. So she's right, they shouldn't be getting additional information, factual information, but they would be entitled to provide, uh, legal information, like, here's what the, here's what the state law says, or here's what your own ordinances are, if that is already in the record. So it's a definitional thing as to what they're allowed to put in, you're exactly right, you can't have them come up with more facts, otherwise they're, they're hearing things that you didn't know about, and you may lose it.
Okay. Do we have any other public comments? Okay, if no other public comments, then we have the motion on the approval of the minutes. We know we already have a couple of additions we need to make, so I don't know if you want to approve these tonight with the additions we need to make, if we want to, um, 'cause we had those ahead of time that we had talked about in our work meeting, a couple of things that were left off.
Should we just table them until next Monday?
Should we?
There are times that.
Okay. Okay, so then could we get a motion then to table the minutes?
I'll motion that we table the minutes from, uh, June sixth, twenty twenty-four until July.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, to approve it.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Wilcox, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second was made by council member Fowers, any discussion on this motion? Okay, our in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries, and we will table those till our next meeting and give us time to review some of these added additional things then that we have. And we did not have any discussion items, reports, or presentations or public hearing, so our next action item is the appointment and swearing in of the new planning commission member Jessica Smith. And, um, in our work meeting, I had, um, just said how I had interviewed Jessica, was impressed by her application. Jessica is here, so Jessica, if you don't mind coming up to the podium, and if anybody has any questions you would like to ask or ask Jessica?
What impressed you about her application?
Do you know, one thing that I really liked was that she has a family background, um, her father has been on city council, and so she has saw him work through those things, so she felt really familiar with the whole legislative process.
Yes, we have been, I know I'm older, but we have been raised, I've been raised and trained to raise my family as being part of the solution, we're not the problem, we're the solution. And so being around, watching them be council members, grandpa lived next door, he was at, you know, we've been a lot with this city, so I understand a lot of how that goes. That mean, you know, meaning that we have to be open and we have to listen, but we still have to look at what the city needs, you know, and move forward, so, yeah.
Next thing I, too, they, um, and I mentioned this in work. Next thing I too, and I mentioned this in work meeting, is that I felt like she was, like she said, I want to see her first aid role. But also in mind that we need to, we need growth to support our community. And so I felt like she grew up in a small Monroe, which is another small community. So she probably understands some of the growing pains of a small community and she, I just was impressed. It felt like she would be someone that would research and find out and come open minded and neutral, which is a key ingredient for our planning commission members. Cause they need to come to these meetings neutral and without their biases already in place.
And that's why we chose Loper is because coming from Monroe, it's a small town, it's like Loper, you don't have to come home till the lights come on. You know, you can call your neighbor or find your kids, you know, and they do, they have a commercial district, but it's still rural. You know, you can still ride your horses, you can still go hunting. You know, I've got kids that that kind, I've got kids that rodeo, which is where I've been and heading as soon as we're done. I've got, yes, I do have the heathens that like motorcycles as well. You know, so we're pretty well rounded, you know, so that's something that when we're talking about planning meetings, that's something that will help is because we're so well rounded. You know, the city's well rounded. We've got people everywhere. So I think we can work together and figure out the best plan for.
Okay. Any other questions for Jessica?
Do you have a big scheme?
I have teenagers. So yes.
Just one.
Yes.
So I got a question. So just, I mean, this, this is pretty general. What's your thoughts? You know, cause we're getting a lot of things popping up in Loper as far as growth and development. What's your thoughts on the, on the Smith project, the potential Smith project? What do you, what's your thoughts on that?
Just hearing about it, I'm excited to hear more about it because we do need that grocery store. You know, we do need something that helps us, you know, cause I admit, I get tired of going to supporting Clinton, you know? And I'd like to know more because I don't fully understand like what the development of the housing situation is coming in. So I'd like to know more of that, but I do like the growth. I like the location of where it's at too. You know, up just on the border of Roy.
So you, I mean, this is probably, you know what a CRA agreement is? I mean, I didn't either.
No.
Like a month ago.
But that was a meeting we can't.
But it's just, you know, and that's one thing that kind of concerns me is like basically they pay for the infrastructure upfront and we pay it back, you know, so. So I think there's a little bit, um, you know, some this way information of how, how fast will they get money from this project? So I'm just curious. I, I too want to know all the facts I can, you know, about it before I make a decision. But those are a couple of things that is a concern that you, you know, obviously we'll have to learn about and stuff, so.
Yeah, I doubt we're gonna ask good questions either.
I have just one question. Are you kind of familiar with our general plan, you know, that was just put in place?
No, I follow a little bit, but no. But no, not fully.
I just wondered if that was kind of a direction that would be like Monroe would be? Or if you see a, should we change directions or?
I, I mean, I'm just basing up, you know, that's what I just thought was, you know, they have a commercial district. You know, every town has a commercial district. But yeah, like I said, I would like to read it and figure it out and then, you know, work with them and talk it out and get what's best.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, if no other questions then, I would like to, so then I would entertain a motion to appoint and then we will swear in Jessica Smith as a planning commission member.
Okay, fine. I'll make the motion that we go ahead and appoint Jessica Smith as a new planning commission member.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Northrup. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second is made by council member Hill. I don't remember to, I don't think we did this by roll call vote. Okay. Do we? I don't have it down as a roll call vote.
Just, just.
It's not an ordinance, it's a, or a resolution, but it doesn't hurt, it doesn't ever hurt to record. But over, yes.
Okay. Well, we can do it roll call vote then. Um, council member Fowers?
Aye.
Council member Hill?
Aye.
Council member Marigoni?
Aye.
Council member Northrup?
Aye.
Council member Wilcox?
Aye.
Okay, our in favor. Okay, thank you. So we will swear you in right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to do it?
No, I think you do. Does that mean we figured it was you?
Yeah, two of us.
Yeah, two.
Um, I Jessica Smith. I Jessica Smith have been appointed to the office of the first city. Have been appointed to the office of the first city. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. Obey and defend. Obey and defend. The constitution of the United States. The constitution of the United States. And the constitution of the state of Utah. And the constitution of the state of Utah. And that I will discharge. And that I will discharge. The duties of my office. The duties of my office. With the Delhi. With the Delhi.
Okay, thank you. Just to make one clarification too. Reed, because we're trying to get all our references in order as far as when our planning commission members were actually put in. So Jessica, you are filling out the remaining term at Mary Simpson that ends in December of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
And so it will be until December. At that time then we will have your term. We have two other terms that are coming to an end. But that does not mean that if, you know, if you couldn't reapply and we can reappoint you. But just so you know, you're filling out your term until December, third, January fourth. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I have no.
That's okay. Thank you. Okay, so the next thing we have then is our ordinance number twenty twenty-four zero two granting Quest Corporation a telecommunications franchise. And this is also something we've been working on for some time. And part of the reason why our packet was a little bit late getting out because we've been trying to meet with their lawyers in California and. So I don't know, Reed, because you're.
No, we need to take that away.
You just stated.
We have two other franchise ordinances that we passed in the last year or so to two other vendors in the same area. This ordinance is modeled after that one. Uh, there are a few subtle changes that were requested by, uh, by Quest. And by the way, Quest and Lumen are the same company. They go by Lumen in California. They could like Quest in, in Utah. Uh, so you can refer to it either way, but you'll notice Tom, they don't want to, they don't want anything about Lumen in there. It's just Quest, so. And here on the ordinance as well. The differences between the other ones are number one in the term. The others were given a ten-year term and if they requested a renewal, they could have a renewal for another five years. This one wanted a ten-year term with two renewals, but with, but agreed that the city could cancel it if at their determination before either of those referrals would renew. So what they would have is essentially a ten-year agreement and if the city doesn't want to cancel it, they have another five. Then the city can cancel it again. If they don't want to do that, they have another five. That didn't seem to me to be a problem because you've got the option, if you don't like it, to cancel it whenever you want. Before they go to renew. So anyway, that's one change. The other change is the others, we have provision saying they couldn't assign their agreements except to a wholly owned subsidiary. Lumen recognized what has happened in the past to AT&T and Quest and to whatever other name they, they've gone by. And that isn't, uh, taken over by a subsidiary, in other words, in, in, uh, rather they had a bigger entity take over then. So this allows for that, allows that if they have another entity that comes and takes them over, then that's acceptable. Any other transfer, if they were trying to transfer their franchise to another entity that was unrelated, they have to get permission. So that's essentially the only change between this and what we have with the other companies. It also provides that they have to give an acceptance and that acceptance can be in the formal contract, which is what is the, and that has to be done within sixty days. I think they intend to do that a lot faster. Uh, I think we've negotiated pretty much a final contract and you were given a copy of that. There are a couple of things that are still under negotiation on the contract relating primarily to the fee provisions. And we'll have those ironed out for the next week or so. But in essence, I think that contract is pretty much what we're gonna end up with.
So we talked about, uh, that fee under considerations. That's what I, I looked for. Maybe that's why there's nothing in here. Where it says in consideration of this franchise, the franchisee shall pay to the city to some outline, to some outline in the franchise agreement between the city and the franchisee.
Correct.
But I, but I couldn't find it and that's because it's still being.
Well, if you go to the contract, it does talk about it. And what it says is basically what was said in the other agreements, that there'll be no franchise fee now. But if the law's changing Utah to allow franchise fee, then you as a council would have the option imposing it, not only on them, but on the other, uh, other groups as well. And so that, we're, we're finalizing that language, uh, but in essence, that's what it's going to say. It's gonna say no fee now, just as, as you didn't have a free on Conex or on Utah broadband. But if Utah law allows it, then you can consider whether you want to do it or not. Because of course, if you impose a fee, as you've seen in other areas, all we do is increase the cost to consumers. Uh, so it's your people who pay the fee and that's why you have to decide whether you want to do that or not.
Would this already be a utility tax that we collect? You didn't utility.
Well, it's really not something you're running, so it's, it's kind of the same, not quite. Utility is normally would be something you're running like the, the sewer with our age and.
Electricity and gas we collect on.
Oh yeah, those, those are not, yeah, they're very similar to that. If, if they were, exactly like those.
Does that need to be in the contract to do that or?
Yeah, it's there.
Okay.
Also, we do collect a utility tax on this?
No, not on this. You have the power to do it if the law allows, but there is nothing about.
If the law allows, the state law?
State law.
State law. And that's because it's a telecommunications.
Telecommunication.
We did, like I say, have quite a lengthy discussion with the lawyers and because we're not meeting on July fourth and this has been going on for quite a few months. And so we discussed this halftime and thought just those few minor things that we can add in there. We could get this approved and get it on its way before July eighteenth, if council agrees upon that.
This has nothing to do with the contract, but I guess for reference to how we treat these parties equally. Connects has come in our city and we've given them kind of the runaround a little bit and you know that mayor as well as I do as far as, um, letting them, um, install their, their services as quickly as they would like. So are we gonna treat Quest the same as we've done Connects? Are we gonna treat them equally? Are we gonna try and find ways to treat them better than we have or, or how, how's that gonna play out? In your opinion?
Are you asking that as to the council?
To anybody, anybody that would like to answer that.
No, I, I think they should be treated, they should be treated as, cause I know Connects hasn't been totally upfront. And yeah, they might get a little bit of a runaround, but they were the first ones to came. I think there was a large curve a little bit, so. But yeah, we, we should treat everybody the same.
Cause, cause I know Quest, Quest has had free reign to go and dig wherever they want to go.
They had.
Without any of them, right?
They, they, they had some grandfather agreement like what? Hope's probably as far as I, as I can remember. So they were, they were operating on that where, you know, that's not okay now. So we're trying to do this.
So they need to come in and apply for permits to dig just like any other company does.
Correct.
Once this is signed and done.
I don't know what infrastructure they have already and they probably do have some infrastructure here because I think they provide full service. I don't know what, whether they can use some of that. I don't know. But if they, if they're gonna dig holes in the roadway, they gotta get a permit.
And that, and that's where I have some hard is the grandfather thing. I don't know if that really applies because they're digging holes in our roads. You know, I, I don't know if that was under a grandfather permit or whatever, but it seems wrong to me to allow Quest to just do whatever they want and hold Connects to the fire on a permitting basis, you know, it's, it seems kind of, kind of.
Number, yeah, number seven says that they, that upon request by either the city or franchisee, but not less often than once each calendar year that they're supposed to meet for the purpose of exchanging information and documents regarding construction and other similar work within the city. So would that be like their permits, but not only once a year or would it have to be?
No, anytime they get an internal, even though they've got to get a permit, that's what your excavation permit says. That provision is meant to, and maybe it's even more important for these entities that want to do it. Uh, is the city, once a year, I'll bring them all together and say, okay, what do you plan on digging this year? And if they're digging in the same place, required they do it together and not dig up their own supplies. Uh, and hopefully that can be managed by the city in a way that is a piece of truce to, to the citizens.
So are we charging them or, you know, if they get a permit, do we charge them for that like we?
Yes.
We some of them we have, Connects, you know, we said, well, out, outside of their actual contract, if they hooked up to all the city facilities then. But how, how are we balancing that out? Are all of them in the end, will all three of them apply for permits and pay the fee? If it's the same, I mean, that would be.
It's pretty unworkable any other way.
It's, it's unworkable any other way. However, Connects, we sort of gave them a little bit of a, not part of the contract. But there was like a verbal agreement that we kind of wondered about that after we did it. But if they're all three the same and they're all treated the same, then I think we're heading in the right direction.
I feel like we should always have contracts and have them all the same. I know you mentioned that it was kind of legally a contract, but an agreement. But that's hard to keep paperwork of an agreement that isn't legally binding.
Yeah, well, we had it in the agreement and then they wouldn't sign it. So then we had to redo it. I mean, it went back and forth and.
Yeah, and it probably needs to be looked at now on a case by case basis. If, if they're gonna run something past one of your buildings and provide service, then maybe you give them offset on some of their, their excavation fees. The problem is you don't know who's gonna go in what area. I can't believe the three companies are all going to put lines to the same places. Doesn't make sense. So probably they're gonna divide the city up somehow and some will have parts and others, so I'd rather parts. Who goes in front of your buildings and who does not is really under the air.
And we don't know who will be in front of our building, building first either. We talked about that.
What's it tough?
Should they be required to get some kind of agenda map right outside? That's what I always thought. Well, I know that one time Connects, we did meet, they did have that map where they were and where they wanted to be. I don't know if there's been anything since and I don't know that they were working on that. I don't, I haven't seen anything since then, but not, not necessarily involved with that.
I know, although I saw it, it did it over, uh, management of the disaster.
It, it would seem to me over the period of time now, collecting fees for permits would more than offset whatever, you know, type of service they would provide the, the city. I mean, my, my point is saying if we just do that for all three of them just the same, I think we're, it's a lot, it's just a lot.
And that, that, that whole area is like open here. So to approve this doesn't necessarily constitute a decision on, on that issue. Uh, but there are obvious discussions probably in a, in a pre-meeting of that whole concept and some ideas.
Okay. Is there any other questions then on this ordinance that you have in front of you? Okay.
Another motion to approve orders, oh, twenty twenty-four dash oh two granting Quest Corporation a telecommunications franchise agreement.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Hill. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second was made by council member Marigoni. Any further discussion on the motion? This ordinance needs to be by roll call vote then. Council member Hill?
Aye.
Council member Marigoni?
Aye.
Council member Northrup?
Aye.
Council member Wilcox?
Aye.
Council member Fowers?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, so our next thing then is the authorization, authorization for myself to be able to sign the contract with Quest Corporation?
Please say motion.
I'll make a motion.
Please take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize Mayor Beane to sign the contract with Quest Corporation.
The motion was made by Councilmember Marigoni. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second made by Councilmember Wilcox. Any discussion on this motion? This just needs to be by, doesn't need to be by Wilcox, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay, so the next item we have is then for the ordinance zero twenty twenty-four zero five to dissolve the board of adjustment, appoint a hearing officer, and additional amendments relating to those appeals. Is there anything you'd like to explain?
Yeah, let me kind of take it from there. The form that you were given a week ago is essentially what you have in front of you here with one meaningful exception and two that are not meaningful. The first meaningful exception, if you got one yesterday, I didn't realize you sent the one out yesterday. The one that we sent to you yesterday, did you send it out?
Yeah.
Okay. So the one you sent yesterday is going to have some slight changes from the one you saw a week ago. The first one is on ten dash five dash seven appeals. And initially, that was set up to have appeals from, to go to the city council from the planning commission. Well, originally, the planning commission received appeals on decisions made by the city staff. And so this changes that. So if there's an appeal by decision from the city staff, it goes to the city council, which is where it really ought to go. And so throughout ten dash five dash seven, wherever it said commission, we changed that to council. And for example, if your staff decides that they're going to acquire something that is onerous and that the helper disagrees with it, then the place that that ought to come for a decision is really to you, not the final decision from the planning commission. So that, it makes that change, and it just takes that throughout that provision. The second change is just a numbering change on ten dash five C dash two. She had the letters goofed up, and so those have to be fixed. For example, where we wipe out one letter, that means the one after them takes over that number. So it's just a numbering issue. And the last one is the same. That is on ten dash five C dash four. Since five, since ten dash five C dash three was eliminated, that four should be a three. So those are really the only changes that you're seeing. Now, the two things that occurred to me that we may want to still change are... I want to go through and make sure that the public authority really is only looking at the record, unless there's legal issues they want to run for. And if that is not the case, then I'll fix that. The second is that this was written to have you appoint a hearing officer and service for five years. My thought is, we really have not had any appeals from the city decisions, period. All, the only we've had is variance, and we've had very, very few of those. I would guess over the length of the city, twenty-five years, you've maybe had five variance requests, maybe six. So my thought would be that rather than appoint somebody for five years, maybe we ought to just leave it, and when the issue comes up, appoint an appropriate hearing officer to hear the case. And I think that often would depend on what the issue is. It's a variance issue. I think the appropriate thing would maybe to have, I don't want to do it, but have Brandon do it, because that is clearly not a decision that ought to be made by a layperson, ought to be done by an attorney, because you're applying state law and city art, city code, which mirrors state law as to whether that's qualified for a variance or not. If it's something else, if it's an appeal of a land use decision, that should not be done by the city attorney, because the city attorney was probably on the original decision that was made. And so you can't ask one of us to review our own decision. So in that case, my thought would be, appoint maybe a city attorney from some other city to come in and handle that one appeal. They might be reluctant to take on a five-year obligation, but I don't think we'll have any trouble getting the Roy City Attorney or an Ogden City Attorney who deals with planned use issues to come in and make a decision on one appeal. We've never had one. So we're not talking about something that's going to happen time and time again, I don't think. I certainly hope not. So that seems to me to be a better way, and I can go back to the law by this to reflect that, if that's what you want. And by the way, I don't see any hurry to adopt this, because we're not dealing with pending appeals. I was worried a little bit that we were going to get one on this request for an alcohol unit that they're backing off, so there's really not a pending issue there.
We do have one pending variance. It was supposed to come on this meeting, but it got flushed, so we do have one...
We do need to have something in place by the next meeting. And we've had two other people, I think, that have came in and requested forms, but haven't returned those.
Our variances?
Tell them to just give them the law, and see if they think they qualify.
Yeah.
It's pretty tough. You know, most variances are requests. They don't like the idea that they have to have a five-year setback. So they say, "Well, I don't want a variance." Well, that doesn't qualify. There's got to be a really good reason why you get a variance and change what the city code is to allow you to do something differently. And those are set out by state law and by city ordinance, it's just going to happen. But it does happen very often.
So those are the ones that need to be read, the variances?
Which paragraph talks about appointing the officer? Do we need to change? Ten dash five C dash two?
Yes, it is. So part C of that ten dash five C dash two says they'd be appointed for five years terms. And I don't know that that makes sense. I think it's a lot easier just to find a properly person for a particular case and have to do it for that case, and then what comes up, and do it again.
So we can make the motion and just have an adjustment to that section?
So if you want to just have that adjustment, and then we'll try to clarify at a frisite place that says they can hear extraneous evidence, and then you can probably pass the ordinance. And then we have something in place, so we want to get that.
So what, Brian, just that, does that cover the, like, what, I can't remember the term?
De novo.
De novo.
Yeah, the de novo is just hearing additional evidence.
Okay. Would we be any further behind to just table it until those corrections are made?
Yes, because we have someone that's already entered in and it's waiting.
If you've got somebody that's waiting...
And our next meeting won't be until July eighteen.
Yeah, so what we would do is just change C to provide that the hearing officer and alternate jurors would be appointed as needed. So we just make that change officially?
So I have one question. On ten dash five seven, under part A, number four, would we still have any additional evidence? Or would we just have the, you know, or would we just have this thing, just we get the...
So which one are you looking at?
On the hills, ten dash five seven.
Ten five seven.
Under B.
Five, five C, five B.
Number H three. H three.
On under four, where it's said, I guess, yeah, would we still consider the additional? That's the de novo thing. That's what I'm confused, is would we still consider additional information? Is that just under...
I don't know, let's see what it says. That's existing language, by the way. That's not something we have.
Because I thought if it was an appeal, we would just consider...
Well, that's an appeal with city council, so you could have additional evidence come in front of you. It's the city council. We just don't want the hearing officer doing that. The city council, if they have additional things, probably ought to hear it. But we'll go through, and if there is something that allows, what they call the trial de noble, that is, that's a scary term, I don't like cross paths, you know? But if there is something that allows the hearing officer to receive additional factual information,
Okay.
Not the city council. You should be over here, the city council.
All right, thank you. So we can have a motion made with the corrections that we have discussed?
So back to Debbie's point, that entire paragraph, it talks about commission. Should that say council instead? What is it referring to? It says commission, I don't remember. Commission shall, the commission should, the commission will...
So are we on ten five seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what I just mentioned at the beginning. And I do one that you were sending just the other day, yesterday, that's all we changed.
So that'll all say council?
That'll say council.
Okay, thank you.
So the one we received is the most current?
Well, the one that you received yesterday is the current one, correct? Or is it not dated?
Which one is in this?
It says commission.
There's one in here...
That's our...
It might be, well, so that I can send it to the...
Okay, so that...
And so, and I can send it out with the corrections from scratch from commission to city council.
Yeah, so that one, it's...
We got to vote this one? Use process.
Well, I know a little bit of content, a couple of years earlier, it says commission. Yeah.
So this one should have city council respond.
So maybe the...
City council.
We were saying it was still the old one.
City council, city council. The one that you got the other day, like yesterday, or whenever you sent that last one out, should have it all printed.
But I think it was said that...
The one we got yesterday says commission, and then the one we have, it says commission as well.
So I think we discussed something wrong.
You said it wrong.
Yeah. As long as we know what's...
So that'll be the motion.
I'll tell you what, let's do this. If you want to pass it with those changes, and then we'll have it on the agenda at the next meeting. If you feel like there's something there still needs changing, you can amend it then, and that, at least we have it in place from now on.
All right, that sounds good. So is there someone that would like to make a motion?
So I'll attempt to make a motion to approve ordinance number oh dash twenty twenty-four dash zero five, ordinance to dissolve the board of adjustment, appoint a hearing officer as needed, and additional amendments related to appeals, with a correction on ten dash five C dash two C, which shall state, instead of appointing the hearing officer for a term of five years, the hearing officer will be appointed as needed. And then the correction of the terms, commission and appeal section to state council.
Okay.
Yeah, there's numbering corrections too.
Oh, yes, and there is this numbering correction, city council.
And numbering corrections.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Hill, seconded by Councilmember Marigoni. Any discussion on this motion?
If we do find an error, is there an opening? We could correct that, we could amend it? Is that part of your motion?
Yeah, we'll be on the agenda the next time, and if you see something that's not correct, then we'll amend it.
Yes.
Yes.
Part of your motion?
Yeah, that's an addition or amendment to my motion.
Okay, any other comments on the motion? This needs to be done by roll call vote. Councilmember Marigoni?
Aye.
Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Aye.
Councilmember Fowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so...
All right, so one other item still on that issue. If you have some pending now, then you want to approve Brandon to hear the variance. You have to have somebody who is... Take a moment and ask.
Okay, so we need to do that as well, this evening, to have? Okay, so any, have a motion made then, for Brandon to be our variance, hear our variances?
I'll make a motion that we approve Brandon to hear our variance, your variance...
Hearing officer of the variance.
Hearing officer. That's all I need to say.
Okay, so the motion was made to have Brandon Richards, our attorney, be our hearing officer for our variances. That was made by Councilmember Marigoni. Is there a second to that motion?
I do have a question also. Is that a one-time thing, like you talked earlier?
Yeah, so that's needed, so you have to... Just don't ever appoint me. I'll second it.
Okay, second is made by Councilmember Wilcox. Any discussion on the motion? So do we need to do roll call on that, or just a...
It's just an appointment, that's fine.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so the last thing then that we have is the resolution twenty twenty-four zero six authorizing an increase in the sewer and garbage collection rates. And this is something that was discussed in our work meeting, in our budget meeting. So we are covering the expenses that we incur every year for the garbage in the sewer. So any discussion on this?
So the motion needs to include the addendums we talked about, or the additional lines? The additional cans, I mean?
Yes, yes. Well, a couple of the wording changes, but...
In the letter.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that relates to the motion, I'll bet you something.
So the motion should, the resolution should reflect the same as in your letter.
Any questions on that? Okay, do we need to have a motion made?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash four six.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Fowers. Is there a second?
Could I have amended, do I need to amend?
Oh, to amend?
To add the additional lines to talk about the additional can for garbage and the additional can for recycling. Those two additional line items in the resolution, oh, six.
Is there a second made?
I'll second it.
Second is made by Councilmember Wilcox. Any discussion on this motion? This needs to be by roll call vote then. Councilmember Northrup?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Aye.
Councilmember Fowers?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Marigoni?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, next on our meeting agenda is public comments. Again, we, anyone that would like to come out and make public comments? You have three minutes. Please state your name and address. Okay, we see no public comments, so now we just need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion is made by Councilmember Northrup?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Fowers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting's adjourned until July eighteen.